A bunch of folks sitting up front along with me included and we thank you so much for being here as well. So, Madam Clerk, could you please read the roll?
Mr. Jacobs, Mr. Morrissey, Mrs. Klein.
Here.
Mr. Amos.
Here.
Mr. Schmidt.
Here.
Mrs. Juon.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Right now, we ask that you join us in a moment of silence, hats off. Please join us. All right, thank you. The pledge will be led by Ward Four Councilmember, Mr. Amos.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you.
Make an emotion to approve the agenda and minutes as presented.
Second.
A motion has been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we have an agenda. Right now, we have oral presentations and if you would please come up to the podium, state your name and address for the records and let us know your thoughts.
My name is Dwayne Ayers. I live at 1205 and a half Bishop Street.
Please remove your hat, Mr. Ayers.
I refuse to do it based on the right that I have, the right to be my person, not your person. Do I have my three minutes?
Mr. Ayers, please remove your hat.
I refuse to move my hat because I have the right to be my own person, not the person you want me to be. The same way last week, you cut me off, said I had to talk about what you wanted to talk about. You wanted me not to say or complain about what I complained before.
I didn't, I just didn't want you to disrespect some of the staff members.
I didn't mention anybody's name, but you cut me right off, said I can't speak about that. And that's the same thing you're doing now.
Mr. Ayers, please remove, please?
You're stepping on my First Amendment rights to speak.
To wear a hat. Please remove your hat, sir.
I'm not removing my hat. I have the right, three minutes was granted to be to speak.
Well, we won't hear your comments. I'll ask for some type of recess, there's not going to be a spectacle tonight. So, please remove your hat, sir.
No, I will not move my hat because I am my person with my hat.
Then the chair doesn't recognize you.
The chair doesn't recognize me. Well, I still have a minute and a half to speak.
The chair doesn't recognize your comments right now. I mean, I've asked sively and carefully and nicely.
You also stepped on my religious rights by forcing me to stand and do your religious rights by saying, "Take your hat off when you respectfully stand." My rights in my church, I sit and I pray with my hat on. So, you stepped on my religious rights along with my constitutional rights.
Is there anyone, if we could do a quick recess to discuss, to discuss this right now? If he doesn't want to remove his hat.
As long as you don't recognize me and I can't speak, because you granted me three minutes, the same thing as last week. You say, "I can't talk about this, I can't do that, I can't complain." And yet, the same things I complained about last week, nothing's done out there.
That's not true.
Not true.
That is not true.
Go take a look at the weeds.
Motion to recess, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
A motion has been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Chief, can I talk to you for a second?
The motion has been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, oral presentations, come on up.
Jim Chapman, 224 Birch. Since all the rain has gone on and we done all that work over in the other sections of town, I was just wondering, how's our water treatment plant handling this rain situation with the water runoff and the sump pumps and all that over there? Are we handling it?
So, Jim, can I ask a favor?
Sure.
So, after oral presentations, I'm going to have staff get up and talk about exactly where we're at, where the water's going to crest, some of the things that we've been seeing. So, if you would be patient for that, we will.
No problem.
All right, thank you, sir.
David Dreyer, 3145 West Birch, West Fourth Street, Birch Street, oh wow. I don't know where I live, I guess. I attended the University Avenue update provided by AECOM a little bit ago. At that presentation, they showed us concepts of two roundabouts, Green Hill and Fletcher. Fletcher was proposed due to the accident ratio, which apparently wasn't there to, in the initial response or in the initial design. I asked if that was supposedly or realistically a report due to the increased traffic there due to the construction at Amesboro. Really didn't get a definitive answer. As for the Green Hill, in my opinion, Green Hill is now one of the most fluid roads in the city, transporting one from Waterloo 218 to southwest Cedar Falls. Don't mess with it. I also asked if anyone had checked with cities on the East Coast who are removing roundabouts and why. The answer was basically not their job to do so. If they are being removed, I would think one would, an engineering firm would want to keep up with things that are going on with that sort of situation. Question, who is behind this to get this redesign done when it was on July 25, 2017 and February 20, 2018, Waterloo will have no roundabouts? It's in the paper, I have copies of that. It was presented that a roundabout at Green Hill and University would open land for commercial development, but at an added cost of $6.5 million. However, removing future bridge repair costs, so, but the bridge's expected lifespan is still another 40 years. This will add $6.5 million to the project that is already over the $28 million from the state estimate at $36.4 million without any roundabout at Green Hill. Don't we have enough land owned by the city for development that is not moving? We have plenty of land here that nobody wants or nobody's chomping at the bit to get, but yet, we need more? At this meeting, there were comments, comment forms available. However, there were those, only those who attended, they are not available anywhere else. By the way, if you want one, I've got several in my packet here if you want to comment on it.
All right, thank you, Mr. Dreyer. We actually had a work session a little bit earlier about University Avenue and there is no roundabout placed in there for Green Hill. So, citizens were heard, you were heard, so there wouldn't be. And then also, when it came to the project, and I'll be on record as saying, I was one of the people that said, "Take care of this business corridor first." But when we saw that we had an opportunity to get a piece of that project done as well to the east instead of waiting the two years to finish that, so, that is now going to be on the agenda, the westernly portion of it. So, we heard, we heard our community, so, and we heard council. So, all right. All right, next. Is there anyone that would like to address the council before I get an update on the, where we're at?
My name is John Wheeler. I live at 929 Home Park Boulevard. Just want to give a hats off to the forestry department. About a month ago, they came by my neighbor's house on a Friday morning and said that there's a tree in her front yard that with the high winds expected that afternoon might cause a problem to the house. So, they came out Friday afternoon and they blocked up and chained up the tree limbs so they wouldn't come down. And then Monday, they came out and took the tree down to avoid any problems with the tree falling on the house. I know the forestry department is really way overworked with everything they've been doing with the Emerald Ash Board. I just wanted to give my hat, hands, hats off to what they did for my neighbor. She really appreciated it.
All right. Paul, I can see Paul blushing over there.
His chest just popped up.
All right, thank you, Mr. Wheeler. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council? Going a second time, yes, ma'am.
Hi, Marsha Butch, 1510 Lyon Avenue, Waterloo. I guess I just want to make some comments before you get into the resolution talking about the special election. Is that okay to do that?
Well, you can do it at that time.
Can I do it now or later?
No, you have to wait to that time. And that's first up, that's first up on the agenda, I believe. So, it'll just be a couple moments, Ms. Butch. All right, thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council going a second time?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I wanted to bring up something to the full council as well as the audience and people of Waterloo that on Saturday, we lost a very intelligent, astute, articulate, hard-studying man in the person of Noel Thornsberry who died Saturday. I know that I myself personally have gotten to know him over the course of about the last nine months and he has been a steadfast person interested in Waterloo, moving Waterloo forward, keeping the council in a modality of following order, procedures. And I will miss him for the discussions that I've had with him and I'm saddened by his loss. And I just hope that he'll look down on this little Irish dude and every now and then shed some light on some issues that need his input. So, I just wanted to make that known to the council and to the Waterloo people that we've lost a very good man.
Right, thank you so much, thank you.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to congratulate everyone. Third time is indeed a charm. We did have fireworks Friday evening and they were amazing. So, congratulations to everybody that was perseverant, that had a role in making that happen. It was a real, and to the mayor and to God for the weather, okay.
Not me, I don't look up to me.
Because the rest of the weekend, I think God saw this little glimmer of time when we could have fireworks, the rest of the weekend it rained. Anyway, so, they were wonderful, good job.
Thank you. Mr. Schmidt?
You know, I think about a year ago, when I was still chairman of the Public Safety Subcommittee, we had a conversation about safety cameras and getting them into some of our higher crime areas. And since then, I'm not aware that anything has happened. I know I got the documentation from the city of Dubuque on what they used to implement that because there were some concerns about the ACLU and some other things. I don't remember all exactly what, but, and in the meantime, I think we saw in the national news that the Molly Tibbetts episode was brought to some kind of conclusion based in part on some public safety cameras that were able to determine who the individual was, apparently, that was involved with that. And, you know, and then I also see that here in Waterloo, we have a window shot out of our, one of our police officers' cars in the city parking lot. We're not quite sure that we can get that information captured on camera. So, it sounds like we are not progressing along. So, I guess I'd just like to have some kind of an overview on where things are at regarding this. I hear from folks in the third and fourth ward on a regular basis about the safety or lack of in their neighborhood and what the city's doing about it. So, I'd like to have a little overview on that if we could.
Sandy, can you talk about it? We had a work session, I don't know how many months ago, with the plan about where we're at with the cameras that we're putting up. But if you want to enlighten us, and I don't know, Chief, if you have any input on that as well.
Sandy Greco, Interpublic Works Director. We are in the process right now of running fiber throughout the city and that's what it takes. And it's very expensive, but we have a grant. We're doing all of Sam Aronin, we're coming back down Kimball Avenue downtown. We're doing the downtown area. At this time, I'm not sure when they're going to be installed exactly, but we will have cameras all along Sixth Street and Fifth Street downtown. There'll be four or five cameras at each intersection pointing all ways. We are working on it, it takes time, it takes money. We're doing the best we can. I have two technicians going to Dubuque, probably within the next week, to talk to their traffic people and get some more information, so.
Sandy, let me ask you a question, but you can have all the cameras you want, but if you don't have a TV and a station to be able to watch them, can you tell about the progress that's being made? Because that's important.
Chris can help me with this too. We are starting to upgrade our traffic control center with larger monitors and, what are they called? The backbone of it, what's it called?
New video management.
New video management. We are working on that, getting that installed. So, you have to have the equipment in order to bring all of this video in and hold it. So, there's more to it than just adding cameras to an intersection. There's a whole backbone of it that we are working on.
Can you, can you send the PowerPoint out to council that we did?
Sure.
A little while ago, so they know exactly what's moving forward. And then, Chief, do you have any, any input you want to give to this?
Deantrelka, Chief of Police, there's several pieces to this puzzle. That's, those are the majority of the pieces. But also at intersections where we're having an issue with crashes, red light cameras are going up. We've identified six to seven, they should be up in, within three months. They will give us footage if we need it for criminal investigations. And the mayor and I have been discussing bringing back the private business video camera ordinance in a modified format because the last time we tried to do this, the council voted against it and we weren't successful. It was actually a video camera on a private home that gave the investigators a tremendous amount of information with the Molly Tibbetts case. But we've made many cases from video cameras on businesses. So, we'd like to have a workable ordinance to bring that to fruition.
Chief, the, the, the traffic camera or the safety cameras that Sandy's department is installing, are those able to be used or will they be able to be used to help solve, solve situations we have?
Yes, but they won't be used for traffic enforcement. They're going to be used for crime resolution, I should say.
I think that's what, what he was alluding to. He wants to know like where we're at with the cameras. Are we putting cameras up? Are we building the system? Are we doing the infrastructure? And what if we're putting up, will we be able to utilize that as well like Dubuque is doing?
And Sandy's system, the system she's working on that's being constructed and evolving, we will have access to it when we need it.
And Sandy, your PowerPoint also has some of the locations too as well, right? All right, Mr. Amos and Mr. Juon.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Schmidt, the mayor did appoint me as far as the chairman of the Public Safety Committee this last time around when he won the election this last time. And there are some individuals in Ward Three and Ward Four that do want to see cameras up in their areas because they are saying that there's activity going on. And I did receive from you the actual Dubuque policy that they had. I looked at it for a second time. I didn't remember that you sent it to me, so the mayor forwarded it to me again. I looked at it and I think that that would be a good policy to try and adopt as we move forward. But, I mean, we had a meeting with Sandy, the chief was involved with it over at Public Works, but we haven't had a meeting since. But as soon as something happens, I will keep you informed as far as what's going on.
Mrs. Juon?
Mr. Mayor, and I think some of that discussion happened, perhaps when I first came on the council, I just remembered that there was going to be a discussion about looking at Dubuque perhaps as a model policy that we could emulate in some way. looking at Dubuque perhaps as a, a model policy that we could emulate in some way. And in my mind, I'm still a little confused between the red light cameras and Sandy's cameras. Um, and perhaps that's where some of the confusion's coming from for the public as well. So some of that's my fault and just not being as educated on it as I'd like, but I do appreciate that you might go ahead and look at that policy.
Dubuque has a camera system. There's cameras almost at every, what, lighted intersection throughout their community, um, parks. And so when we, when we take a look at, so, so the first part, uh, Councilman, um, Schmidt sent over their policy because just putting a camera up, invasion of privacy, the ACLU and other places frown on that. So, you know, and I, and I won't, and I won't say in all situations. So that policy was for council to be able to review. Um, so that's why I resent after he asked me. And the second part though is an entire traffic camera safety system. This system could be utilized in situations where something happens over here and you can follow that car, uh, in almost real time to see whether they go up this street, that street, but you can actually follow because you have a sophisticated camera system. And our system is going to be one of the best technologically advanced systems in the entire state because we get to build it up right now with the newest technology. So Sandy was talking about, uh, laying fiber. You know, we've been able to utilize hundreds of thousands of dollars in grant money. So it's no cost to the city yet. So we've been doing that, but it is to kind of duplicate and have a system similar as Dubuque where we can utilize it everywhere. There's also, I believe, um, other cameras that we have, uh, in areas, I believe, that are, uh, deemed as, uh, high-spot areas as well. So those are that portion. Now, the red light cameras and the Rambo, uh, that's, that's a different, but we're trying to get to that point. It took Dubuque twenty, twenty years or so. Uh, we're moving at a fast pace. Yes, sir.
And could I ask also, I know part of the conversation was utilizing, um, uh, MediaCom for their fiber optics, which I understand they do not have throughout the city, or as I understand they don't. Uh, but MediaCom possibly see if you, I don't know, Mid-America Energy has anything, but, but anything that's in the ground that they would be willing to partner with us. Are we, are they involved in that conversation so that we might possibly cut the costs of some of this installation?
Do we work with MediaCom?
At one time, I thought they were.
And then, um, we probably want to have another presentation and get the chart and the map up to show, you're fine.
We do have a partnership with MediaCom in regard to, uh, what I call our pole cameras. They assist us with those and the operation of them. And these pole cameras are not, uh, they're, I won't say expensive to operate, but there's a cost every year. Uh, and it's not insignificant, the cost.
All right. Okay. So if we can kind of dust off that PowerPoint and then, uh, maybe add in some future stuff as well, give council update, that'll be good. All right. Any other? That was an agenda item.
You can talk about the water before you want me to.
Yeah. Um, okay. So, uh, Jamie, I know, I know, Grant, I told you we only be about five minutes, but, uh, Jamie or Sandy, could you give, uh, folks an update on where we're at, uh, with the water?
Uh, Jamie Knutson, interim city engineer. All of you've seen the flooding that's going on. Um, Public Works right now is they've closed Fletcher Avenue, uh, Green Hill, possibly Park Road, few others that are low-lying areas. Um, Waste Management has been out closing storm sewer outlets to Blackhawk Creek and to the Cedar River and turning on our pump stations. Right now, the latest forecast is we're supposed to crest, the cedar's supposed to crest at about sixteen point seven feet. Um, that's well below the 2008 and even the 2016 floods. Um, starting at about eighteen feet on the gauge, that's when we have to start looking further ahead because at that point, depending upon where the river's going to go, we may end up having to start closing the railroad bridge, Park Avenue, Eleventh. And those do take a little longer time to close. Um, but if it stays right now where it's predicted to crest, well, you won't have to close any of those. Um, I did talk with the Corps of Engineers this morning. Um, they're ready to move and start sending folks up here to assist us if things continue to increase. Um, again, we'll just have to wait and see. So that's, as much as I know at this point, Sandy maybe has a few other things to add.
And you said it's going to crest at?
Sixteen point seven.
Sixteen point seven.
Tonight, did you say?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, I believe.
And eighteen's trouble.
Eighteen is when we start having to look further down the road just because taking ti, it takes a lot longer to close Park Avenue, Eleventh and the railroad bridges, yes.
And the Army Corps, um, gives us a list. I don't know if you said it while I walked out, gives us a list of things that we need to do at what particular time. And based upon the level of the water, um, we have to do certain things. And you, and I think, Sandy, did you have one related to him?
Just wanted to know where Green Hill was closed.
Down by the river.
Down by the river, okay.
Down by the riverside.
Um, I only have a couple of things. And one is that, um, Shawless Road, we did open it today. So it is open by the casino. Um, the water did go down. So that's open. Um, the other roads are still closed. And we are, um, making sandbags. We are filling sandbags just in case someone, if anyone needs them. Um, we also have it set up outside that if the public does need them and we are out, um, they can come in and fill their own and intake them. So we are set up. So we're ready.
Yes, sir.
That's a quick, quick question. Last night, I happened to be out and about when one of the big rainstorms came down about eight or eight-thirty. And in the Audubon neighborhood, it appeared that the sewers were backing up. And I mean, there was water coming up out of them. Um, can you explain that a little bit or?
Jamie Knutson, interim city engineer. Uh, basically, we're getting more rain coming down than what the pipes in the ground can handle. Um, and when that happens, you start seeing the water start to pop back out, manholes, intakes, catch basins, all of that. So it's just too much water and the pipes aren't big enough to take care of it. So.
That's similar to what happened to our neighbors. Peter Fawkes, I saw like downtown.
That would be my guess, yes. I can't, don't hold me to that, but that would be my guess, yes.
I saw it on television. Uh, there was a lot going on too. All right. Um.
Okay. Motion to close the hearing, receive comments and place on file.
Second. Motion's been made with the second in our favor.
Aye.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Make a motion, um, to receive the consent agenda, place on file and approve with 1A1, the dollar amount of $2,564,039.49.
Second. All right. Motion's been made with the second. Uh, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrison?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Juwan?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Uh, I believe Mr. Steve Trust is in the audience. Uh, he's been selected for, uh, Planning, Programming and Zoning Commission. If you would please stand up. Uh, thank you for your service, your dedication, and, uh, we look forward to, uh, having you serve with us. So thank you. All right. Uh, number two, I think we'll take that all by itself for some reason.
Motion to approve resolution approving filling Ward Five vacancy by special election.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I would like to, uh, change that resolution to read a resolution approving filling the Ward Five vacancy by council appointment.
All right. That motion has been made with the second. Do we need any discussion?
Well, the only thing I, I would just say, um, obviously we need to get that seat filled. And I think that, two thoughts really on this, uh, council appointment. Number one, should we be successful doing that? And I believe we could be, given the number of people we've had indicated an interest in applying for that position and kind of the broad breadth of experience those folks would bring. I think it's possible we could do that. So I think it would be more expeditious. Also, um, the election option, we do know is going to cost us a projected $6,000. And, uh, should there be more than two candidates that would file for an election, so it's possible, likely that we would then need a runoff election probably in January, and that would be another $6,000. So there's a potential of $12,000 to be saved there. So I think for that reason, uh, at least we're starting out with a council appointment's a reasonable, reasonable request.
All right. Mr. Veder, you have any comments?
Grant Veder, Blackhawk County Auditor. I just wanted to say, in light of the discussion earlier at your work session, we were talking about, um, these hypothetical situations where, um, an appointment might be made that would be, um, effective at a later date. And I had a discussion with, um, City Attorney Zellifer about this. We were looking at the language in the code. There's a couple of things here that are not as clear as we'd like them to be, but, um, I think I, well, I, I want to, uh, check on this. I can check tomorrow with the Secretary of State's office, but I believe when it says that the appointment shall be made within sixty days after the vacancy occurs, that that means that the vacancy will be filled within sixty days, not just that you could, uh, set, uh, an effective date within sixty days. So I just wanted to make sure that you understand, uh, that that's my understanding of this. But I, if you, uh, wish to have, uh, further research on that, I'd be happy to do it.
And I'm not sure if this again is a question for Mr. Veder or for, uh, Clerk Felkley, but for the folks at home that weren't watching during the work session we had previously, could one of you two kind of give the audience at home, uh, an overview of if we go the, uh, council appointment, what the timeframe is and what's, you know, what's the soonest something could be done? And if we go the election route, December 11th is the earliest that anything could happen. So I'm not sure who, who'd like to run with that ball, but I'll let you.
You can start, our special guest.
I'd be happy to start. Um, the law says that the council has, um, two options in the case of a vacancy. They can fill it by appointment. And as I was saying, that needs to be done within sixty days of the vacancy occurring. Um, if they, if the council chooses to fill it by appointment, then the people of Ward Five can get up a petition, uh, to call for a special election. And they have fourteen days after publication of the notice that you're going to appoint or within fourteen days after the appointment is made to file that, um, petition for an election. So if a petition is filed, you will hold an election. The other choice of the council is to just call for an election. And in that case, the, the law says that you would inform the county auditor, um, and that the election would take place at the earliest practicable date, um, but no earlier than thirty-two days after the, uh, the auditor is informed. Um, that runs into some other complications at this time because of the timing of the general election on November 6th. The law says that there can be no election held four weeks prior to or four weeks after the general election. So if the council calls for an election, at this point, um, the thirty-two days would fall within the four-week window before the general election. And so we would have to wait until, um, the total of eight weeks, four weeks before and after passes. And so the earliest date that an election could be held is December 11th. Uh, the other option is that the council would take no action at all. And if that's the case, then once that sixty days expires, uh, during which the council was supposed to make an appointment, then the clerk notifies the county auditor. The county auditor calls an election for the earliest practicable date. Uh, given that the, uh, that sixty-day deadline falls on October 9th, um, we would be in the same situation with the, um, the blackout uh, on the calendar before and after the general election. And so if it came to us to call the election, it would still be December 11th.
So then realistically, what would be, if we were to, to pursue the council appointment, what would be the, realistically, the earliest we could appoint somebody to fill that seat? I mean, are we talking a couple of weeks? Are we talking a month?
I think you can, uh, you can fill it, um, at your leisure.
Well, we've got a post-notice.
But you have to publish the notice. And so if you say, uh, we're, we're filling it immediately and you publish that in the paper, you would have somebody that you've appointed, but that person, uh, would not continue to serve if, um, if a petition is filed for a special election.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
I would just say, first of all, thank you to all of the people that have contacted all of us. And there were so many really terrific people that offered to be appointed, that said that they'd be willing to do that and eager to serve in that position. Um, that the troubling part to me, or not troubling, but the opposite side of that was I met with countless people from Ward Five. And they really want, um, to elect their own representative. And on the other side, I'm not really sure, very honestly, given our history, that we as a council could agree one, on one person to appoint. So while I, I thank everyone that volunteered to be appointed, I'm personally going to support a special election.
All right. Um, Mr. Amos?
Uh, yeah, Mr. Mayor, um, one of the things that I just came to mind listening to Councilman Schmidt was, um, talking about the cost of this election and possibly a, another election totaling $12,000. If I remember correctly, we had an opportunity to actually have an election with no cost to the voters at all or to the taxpayers at all. And for me, I, like Councilwoman Juwan, anyone and everyone that contacted me wanted to make that decision themselves. There was never anyone other than those individuals who wanted to be appointed sending me an email. So for me, I, I just, I cannot support this amendment at all.
All right. So we've, yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to add that, um, you know, we, we on the council are fully aware, uh, of the information given to us about not just one, but possibly a couple, uh, people who have gathered enough signatures, uh, to petition a special election if we were to go ahead with a special appointment. Um, the people that I've talked to, first, they, they wondered why we as a council did not, um, choose to have the special election occur, uh, coincidental with the, uh, general election on November 6th. Not only to save money, but also it brings out more people to vote. Uh, so I, you know, at this point in time, uh, bringing up, uh, you know, something other than what we could have done for the voter's sake on November 6th just seems like, what? Uh, why didn't we vote for this November 6th, uh, um, special election coincidental with the special election if you're talking in these terms now? Uh, so we had our chance and the, and we, and we blew it, quite frankly, in my opinion. The other thing is that the, uh, voters, they want that election. They, they don't want us to make a special appointment. They want a chance to, uh, choose the person from, uh, their ward, uh, to make decisions for them and be representative of them, not have us picking that. So, uh, I join Mr. Amos and Ms. Juwan in, uh, supporting the special election, even though unfortunately, it's now got to be December 11th.
Right. Um, normally, um, on amendments, I don't allow the audience, but I think on this one, I told Ms. Butch that she would be able to speak. And I should have done it prior to, uh, the amendment. If you would like to, um, talk, I'll allow this one. Sorry about that.
That's okay. I was just waiting. I'm patient.
It may be over, it may not be over.
Yeah, well, I've lost sleep over this one. Um, Marsha Butch, 1510 Lyon Avenue. I guess I'm, I'm of the, being a citizen and speaking from, hearing a lot from a lot of people, um, I was very disappointed that the council could not make a decision to do the vote on November 6th during the time when there's going to be a lot of people out anyway. Yes, it's nonpartisan, but as we all know, that's kind of not the way things have been going. it's nonpartisan, but as we all know, that's kind of not the way things have been going. We can see that. So for you to even make a decision now seems like it might not be that easy for you to do, just seeing how we watch, how we watch you guys. So I guess I would like to see, I wish we could go back to before where we did. Here's my main point. I sat in on all of the budget hearings that you guys had, and where you listened to everybody, and all you talked about was cut, 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 right? We heard that. And so you did cut our tax, city taxes a little, and we all appreciate that. You also cut a position that should have been filled in the mechanic area, that was pre-authorized before. You were trying to save money. Now, here we are having to spend an extra $6,000 that we should not have had to spend at all, and possibly now 12. That's, I'm sorry, that's very, that's just not using your head. Guess that's all I have to say.
All right. So we've had a comment by the good citizen of, that's Ward Five?
No, I'm Ward Two.
Ward Two. And we've had council communication. Are we ready to take this amendment to a vote, Madam Clerk? And the amendment is to do a appointment?
Mr. Morrissey?
No.
Mrs. Klein?
No.
Mr. Amos?
No.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Juwan?
No.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
All right, so that fails the vacancy by special election, Madam Clerk?
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Juwan?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
All right, thank you. He disappeared. So, so we need to get, so you heard it, we need to get something to you as well, so folks can start.
I'll send you an email in the morning.
All right. And so, just so we're all on the same page, this will be an election on December 11th, correct?
Unless you want us to decide the date, which I didn't think we could do legally.
We can do December 11th.
That's, that's your choice at this point.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, what's the deadline for someone applying to run for this position? Do you know offhand? I think you said it earlier.
November 16th.
November, what did somebody just say?
Yeah, it was.
November 16th.
November 16th?
That's the deadline for nomination petitions.
And they can get the papers from your office?
You can get the papers off the internet. We generally don't keep supplies.
So let's not get into the process, because other folks can do that, just like all of us did. Thank you so much, good sir. Yes, yes, yes.
Mayor, before Mr. Veeder leaves, in order to make this clean, before we move on to another item, should we ask that we add to this, or make an amendment to this, clarifying that that special election shall be the earliest date, which we understand to be December 11th?
No, that's, he, he, he sets the date, and it's the earliest practicable. Why would we do that when he's already saying he's going to do it for December 11th?
It's kind of.
It's not on the agenda.
Accidental.
And then we already, he needs to set it.
He wants to go to dinner.
No.
Rudy's is calling.
It actually says that the council will call for the election, but you have to give the 32-days' notice and all the other stuff. So the case in which we would call the election is if you went 60 days with no action. It boils down to the same thing, but the way the law reads, you're asking us to have an election on December 11th.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Could someone take three, four, and five? Thank you so much for all the time you spent on this. Yes, sir.
Item number three is adopting a resolution accepting a grant from the Black Hawk County Gaming Association in the amount of $600,000 in conjunction with the Lincoln Park Improvement Project. Item number four is adopting a resolution accepting the Iowa Department of Transportation's Office of Aviation Grant with contract number 20601, and project number 91, 9-1-190-ALO200, for the fiscal year 2019 Commercial Service Vertical Infrastructure Program, for improvements to the general aviation T-hanger Rose A, B, and C, and airline and passenger terminal improvements, carpeting and lighting, and authorized mayor and city clerk to execute said document. And item number five is adopting a resolution approving a lease agreement with CNS Car Company for 2019 Hyundai Santa Fe VIN number SNMS33AD0KH005480, to be used by the School Resource Officers for a six-month period at no cost to the city, and authorized mayor to execute said agreement.
Second. All right, thank you. Any questions on these items?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir. Do you want to go to Mr. Dreyer first, and then come to you, sir?
David Dreyer, 3145 West Forest Street. Number three, what needs to be done at Lincoln Park, and how much is our part of the bill?
You're going to love this one. All right, your only question is, good sir?
I'll wait here for the answer.
All right.
Paul Hudding, Leisure Services Director. Lincoln Park is in need of major renovations. A lot of it you won't see. A lot of it's electrical, underground plumbing, but also a lot of it that you will see. There's going to be new walkways, new lighting, new benches, some interactive facilities or interactive features for children, and that's pretty much it without going through a detailed diagram that we're going to have the architect do later.
Oh, so you will have the presentation about the design and all those things? Because you have public meetings. Did you have public meetings on it?
We already had public meetings, and we did have the preliminary design presented, so with drawings and so forth. So those are out there, and they're on the internet as well.
Okay.
They're posted. There's a YouTube video. So at the Sportsplex, we did have an open house, public meeting.
All right, if Mr. Dreyer wanted to take a look at the preliminary plan, could he call office, or where could he go if he doesn't?
Stop by any time.
Second half of the question was, how much is our take on this?
$40,000.
What's the project total?
$980,000.
This says six, and it's 980, and we only have to put in 40?
Right. We have, this is our, this is our second grant that we're going to be, I hope, accepting, and then we have two more following.
Fantastic. Thank you.
All right. All right, thank you. Mr. Jacobs?
Mr. Mayor, item number five, CNS Car Company is donating a car for our use for six months. Do we, I don't, maybe I missed it, but do we recognize them, or do we have like a, you know, some kind of thank you plaque, or something that we give them on a routine basis? I know this goes on and on, but I don't know that we've actually done that, so.
Chief.
Dan Trelka, Chief of Police. I've gone down there, personally have thanked them, and this is huge for our usage, because we have a lack of serviceable cars, so this really enhances our fleet.
So could we maybe work with Wendy and put something out, or start? I think you want to acknowledge their generosity to our schools and our.
Will do.
Okay, thank you, sir. Any other questions? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Juwan?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Six, seven, and eight, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Morrissey?
I'd like to make a motion adopt a resolution awarding the fiscal year 2019 Waterloo Yard Waste Water and Sanitary Sewer Extension Contract 952 to Lodge Construction Incorporated of Clarksville, Iowa, in the amount of $242,253, and approving the contract bond and certificate of insurance, and authorize the mayor to execute said agreement. Number seven, a resolution approving acceptance of improvements of the Ottoman Hills First Edition performed by Dave Schmidt Construction Company of Cedar Rapids, Iowa, and receiving file two-year maintenance bonds. And eight is a resolution approving the award of Hotel Motel Tax Council Discretionary Fund to the Waterloo Leisure Services Sportsplex in the amount $11,580 for marketing, and to Waterloo Leisure Services the amount of $12,390 for an event shuttle.
Second. All right, that motion's been made with the second. Questions about these three? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Juwan?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Nine, ten, and eleven.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Amos?
I'd like to make a motion adopting a resolution approving the memorandum of understanding with Intercog for the writing, preparation, and submittal of the Iowa Department of Transportation RISE Grant to improve access for the former Wiseman Steel site near the Highway 63 and University Avenue intersection, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute any necessary documents. Number 10 is a resolution approving the memorandum of understanding with Intercog for the writing, preparation, and submittal of the Iowa Department of Transportation RISE Grant for the Cedar Valley Crossing Development near the intersection of Highway 63 and Highway 20, to provide an extension for Marni Avenue, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute any necessary documents. Number 11 is a resolution approving award of bid for janitorial services to Midwest Janitorial Service, Inc., in the amount of $7,154 per month for the following buildings: City Hall, Carnegie Annex, Waterloo Police Training Center, Memorial Hall, Waste Management, and the parking ramp enclosure attached to the Waterloo Building.
Second. All right, that motion's been made with the second. Questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Question about number 11 is, and that's to Noel, I know that we had discussed this before, but what, something that has sort of bothered me is that it doesn't appear that when this goes out, that we have any unionized companies that we go to. And I just wonder, Mr. Mayor, Noel Anderson can answer if there are any unionized places that provide these services that could be added to that list to get some bids on?
Mr. Anderson?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. We can definitely check in to see if there are additional companies that would have unionized employees. We put the information out there for the bidding requirements, and these are the, these are the three companies that responded.
Okay, so, and as follow-up, is there, do we have a list of those that are unionized in the region here, Mr. Mayor?
We can try to look and see if there's any unionized ones that we're aware of. That's not one of the criteria that we had put into it, and we had made this available in several different forums for people to bid upon, or get the bid package. So I can, I can check into that and follow up and send you the process we went through to make this public, and check to see if we're aware of union versus non-union jobs.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Sherbon?
John Sherbon, 1715 Robin Road. In regards to number nine, Wiseman Steel property, all the years that I can remember that, that was always used for a salvage, or salvage. They tore engines apart, dumped the oil on the ground, antifreeze, whatever. They, back in those days, you didn't have to do anything for the EPA. So that's got to be some humongously polluted ground. And two, why would we want to put another road, hook it up to University Avenue, when we've got an intersection down there at Fletcher, if the traffic should be turned around and hooked back up there, rather than put another intersection in, so we could put another stoplight in there to impede the flow of traffic even further? And I was just curious, because we've got ourselves in some really good pickles with several of these manufacturing places, and Wiseman's at that time was a terrible deal. I mean, you could go down there and unload stuff, and you go right to your knees, it was that bad, with oil, not mud. So something to think about. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Is it Sherbon or Sherbin? Sherbin. All right, thank you, sir. Other questions? Madam Clerk?
Mrs. Juwan? I will be voting yes. I did check with the city attorney, and as I am no longer employed by Intercog, I do not have a conflict.
Mr. Jacobs?
I'm sorry. I checked with the city attorney just now, to make sure that I don't have a conflict of interest. Since I'm no longer employed with Intercog, I do not have a conflict. So I will be voting yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
All right, thank you. 12, 13, and 14, please. Mr. Schmidt?
Number 12 is adopting a resolution rescinding Resolution Number 2015-187, adopted on March 9th, 2015, to correct a utility easement description, description for an encroachment agreement with University of Iowa Community Credit Union, and adopting new resolution entering into an encroachment agreement with the University of Iowa Community Credit Union, authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said documents. Item number 13 is adopting a resolution approving a second amendment to the development agreement and minimum assessment agreement with Cardinal Construction, Inc., changing the developer to Cardinal Construction, Inc., and IPE 1031 REV 279 LLC, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents. And item number 14 is adopting a resolution approving a temporary construction easement and dedicating a sanitary sewer easement on land owned by the city of Waterloo for the Brock Sanitary Sewer Main Extension, Contract Number 954, located north of 1318 Martin Road.
Second. All right, that motion's been made with the second. Questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Regarding number 12, I had recently read, and I don't know where this would play with this one. I mean, if this gets approved, if it's just something that simply can be changed without council approval, but I had heard that the University of Iowa had filed some kind of suit, or something having to do with using their name associated with that credit union. And I don't know if that is something that Noel should check into, and we should deal with consistent with doing this, so that we don't misname this, if that is an issue? Just a what-if.
But if some legal, you know.
Dave Zellifer, City Attorney. The University of Iowa has objected to the credit union being known as the University of Iowa Credit Union. There's a contest now to take place in the next, I believe, year or two to rename it. Whatever the successor is, whatever the name is, we could just amend the agreement to show that the name has changed, so that should be no difficulty whatsoever.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
All right. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Juwan?
Yes.
All right, thank you. 15 and 16.
Mr. Mayor? Number 15 is a resolution accepting deed from Black Hawk County for property generally located at the corner of Walnut Street and Sixth Street, in the amount of a dollar, and authorize mayor and city clerk to sign and fully execute all necessary documents. Number 16 is a resolution approving professional services agreement with I and S Group, Inc., in an amount not to exceed $206,390 for a building survey slash assessment for the city of Waterloo, and authorize the mayor to execute said document.
Second. That motion's been made with the second. Questions? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Juwan?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Could someone take 17, please?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Morrissey?
I'd like to make a motion to receive, file, consider, and pass for the third time, and adopt an ordinance, amending ordinance number 5079, as amended the city of Waterloo zoning ordinance, to expand the alcohol sales use overlay district, and change the requirement for retail area of a grocery store from 10,000 square feet to 15,000 square feet.
Second. All right, that motion has been made with the second. Third reading. Questions?
Jim Chapman, 224 Birch. This is that overlay, right, Mayor? I'm for the overlay. I got a question about a business that just started in our area. I got a question about a business that just started in our area. I went to bed one night, and it was called Goodies Supermarket. Woke up the next day, now it's Byron's Avenue Supermarket. You know, they applied for a liquor license, they appealed the other liquor license, does that all go with them now, or?
Not sure.
I mean, does it automatically switch hands to Byron from the Goodie Mart to Byron Avenue Supermarket, or do they have to reply for liquor license and?
So does a liquor license have to have the same name as the business? So if I'm opening up Heart2Heart Grocers, does my liquor license have to be Heart2Heart Grocers, or could it be Heart Grocers?
Not necessarily. You could have a corporate entity that owns, say, I'm trying to think of an example offhand is hard, but you could have Heart Corporation that owns, you know, Speedy Grocery Stores Incorporated throughout the Midwest. There's different companies that'll hold different types of businesses, so not necessarily the, the liquor license needs to be held by the individual or the company that's gonna be receiving the revenue for the sales that are gonna take place at that location.
Yeah, that's what I was asking, you know, it was approved by.
It would only impact if their corporate name has changed.
Okay.
Or if their ownership within the corporate entity has changed.
Okay, but I mean, is it still the same owners? You know, I mean, the Goodie Mart, is it still the same owners now that's Byron Avenue?
As far as our office is concerned, the same individual who's, has an appeal with the same liquor license is the same owner of that establishment.
Same people.
Nothing's been brought to our attention until this very moment. But as far as we're concerned, the same owner owns it. We have not received any notification otherwise.
We just don't see the same people there, so we're just kinda curious if the liquor license goes with it, or, you know.
Right. Good question. Yes, sir. So, Kelly, if what is being inferred would happen, we wouldn't really have any visibility to that until next year, when the liquor license comes up for renewal, if it were a different owner, is that correct?
If there's an ownership change that takes place, whoever has corporate ownership or business ownership within that liquor license, the owners have to pass a background check, things like that. So anytime a business has changed hands, an ownership has changed, they notify our office, and then that comes back to council for an ownership update.
Thank you. Alright, Madam Clerk?
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Juwan?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Alright, thank you. Someone take 18, please?
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Item 18 is a motion to receive, file, consider, and pass for the first time, an ordinance amending the 2008 City of Waterloo Traffic Code by adding subsection 8A, Crab Apple Lane to section 545, Yield Streets, to the 2008 Traffic Code as follows: Crab Apple Lane at Falcon Ridge.
Second. That motion has been made with the second. Council, need any elaboration, or are we good to go? Alright, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Juwan?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Alright, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second. That motion has been made with two seconds. Could we have a little overview on the timeliness, security, safety, whatever? Safety, timeliness.
Sandy Greco, Interim Public Works Director. We had requests from the neighbors in that area that there was no, it was unsure of who should stop for what. And so we went out and did a traffic study. The traffic engineer did the normal visibility, speed, access, counting, and it did not require a stop sign, but a yield sign will help direct cars as to who has the right to go, and also it is a bus stop for kids, too, so that will help out.
So this would be a public safety issue?
Yes.
Right, thank you.
And this is on both sides of Falcon Ridge, that the yield sign will be there, right?
Crab Apple will stop.
Pardon?
Crab Apple will stop at Falcon Ridge.
But on both sides of Falcon Ridge?
Yes.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Alright, thank you. So the motion to suspend the rules, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Juwan?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Alright, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion to consider and pass to the second and third times and adopt the ordinance.
Second. That motion has been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mrs. Juwan?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.